Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the June 2025 Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for being here. If you are joining us this evening to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please use the sign-up sheets that are located directly in front of me. Ms. Lopez, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6-FSI. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 14th, 2025, and January 16th, 2025. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The phone meeting recording will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communications devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lopez, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Katamatori?
Here.
Ms. Delara? Mr. Delator?
Here.
Mr. Grania?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Cloffo?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
And Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. We are going to begin our evening with our May and June Student of the Month. So for the recognition portion, I will turn the meeting over to Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez.
Good evening and a warm welcome to the esteemed members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, families, staff, and most importantly, our Students of the Month. Tonight, as we recognize the Students of the Month for both the months of May and June, we do more than simply applaud academic achievement, positive behavior, or school spirit. We celebrate the hearts and minds that have shaped this school year. To our May honorees, you stood out in a season of growth in the final stretch of the academic year when energy can begin to fade and routines feel familiar. You pushed through with purpose. You modeled resilience, focus, and integrity, not because it was easy, but because you knew it mattered. To our June students, you brought the year to a meaningful close. Your teachers and peers have seen your kindness, your consistency, your quiet leadership. You've shown that excellence is not only about what you accomplish, it's about how you show up for others, day in and day out, even as the year winds down. Each of you reflects what is possible when determination meets opportunity. You've reminded us that character counts, that effort matters, and that growth happens not just in books and in tests, but in the choices we make and the people we become. As we step into summer, let your recognition tonight serve not just as a capstone, but as a launching point for continued curiosity, deeper kindness, and unwavering belief in your own potential. You inspire us, and we are so very proud of you. Now, we will ask that the Joseph F. Brandt Principal and its, uh, Mr. Charles Bartlett will come up to the podium. He will then introduce the Connors Principal, Ms. Addy, and she will introduce our next Principals, Principals Dickerson, Sorfine, and Pica Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School. Each will celebrate their school selection and pause for the very important picture opportunity. Again, thank you for being with us this evening, and with that, I'd ask Principal Bartlett to join me at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. Good evening, Dr. Johnson and our Board of Education members, to all of our guests here tonight on the eve of our last day of school. At this time, I'd like to ask Bennett Mitchell to join me at the podium. Congratulations to Bennett Mitchell, our Brandt School Student of the Month for May. Bennett was nominated by his second-grade teacher, Ms. Rodriguez. Bennett was nominated for consistently demonstrating his best efforts in his academics, being kind and inclusive to all of his peers and being a role model in the classroom. He approaches each day with a positive attitude and a willingness to learn. Bennett shows respect to both classmates and teachers. His compassion, perseverance, and quiet leadership make him someone others naturally look up to. Bennett's actions reflect strong character and a genuine desire to make his classroom a welcoming and productive space for everyone. "As Bennett's second-grade teacher, I've seen firsthand how his quiet leadership and kind heart positively impact our classroom community," remarked his teacher, Ms. Rodriguez. She said he leads by example, always treating others with respect and approaching challenges with determination and a growth mindset. He is a joy to teach and a student every teacher hopes for. Bennett has greatly improved his DRA level this year, and he has also become a much more independent writer. Awards he has won throughout our school year include the Physical Education, Mandarin, and Science Awards at our academic pep rallies. Bennett is an asset to our school because he embodies the values we hope to instill in all of our students: kindness, responsibility, and a love for learning. He helps create a positive and inclusive environment where all students feel seen and supported. Whether he's offering a helping hand to a classmate or participating thoughtfully in classroom discussions, Bennett's presence uplifts those around him. His consistent effort, respectful demeanor, and positive attitude make him a role model inside and outside of the classroom. Bennett's favorite subject in school is math. He loves to play games that involve problem solving. Bennett also really enjoys playing basketball. You can find him shooting hoops at Columbus or Church Square Park during his free time, and Bennett wants to be a basketball player when he grows up. Bennett had a chance to reflect on receiving this award, and I was so pleased to hear him describe his overall school experiences. He said, "I love my school because we get to do fun things like physical education Mario Kart games, making dragon boats during Mandarin, and because I get to see my friends every day. We, in turn, are grateful we get to see you each day better. Thanks for being the embodiment of a Brandt student." Please join me congratulating our May Student of the Month, Bennett Mitchell. And at this time, I would like to ask Haley Crandell to join me at the podium. Congratulations to Haley Crandell, our Brandt School Student of the Month for June. Haley was nominated by her fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Wedock. Ms. Wedock said Haley is a wonderful, positive student who always brings a can-do attitude to our classroom. She is homeroom 303's biggest cheerleader. She is kind to her classmates, participates in discussions, and puts great effort into her work. Haley consistently shows respect, responsibility, and resilience. She is truly one of the kindest souls you'll ever meet. Her thoughtfulness and humility make her stand out in the best way possible. Haley follows the rules, leads by quiet example, and puts her absolute best into everything she does. Haley has performed onstage, shines as a defensive star on the basketball court, and has shown tremendous growth both academically and in her confidence. She also plays the clarinet and violin, showcasing her incredible talent and dedication across the arts and beyond. Haley is a true asset to our school community. She is a loyal friend, a positive influence, and a role model. Whether she's performing onstage, playing music, or giving her best in the classroom, she sets an inspiring example of what it means to be dedicated, respectful, and full of heart. Haley has a deep love for the arts, especially singing, acting, and musical theater. She is an amazing singer. One of her proudest moments was performing in Newsies when her favorites and her favorite song to perform, her favorite songs to perform were Seize the Day, King of New York, and Carrying the Banner. Haley brings that same excitement from the stage into the classroom. She jokes that her favorite subject is lunch and recess, but science is a close second. She especially enjoys learning about the five senses and is always eager to discover the new cool things science has to offer. Outside the classroom, Haley shines. She's an active basketball player and says that being on the court helps relieve stress. She also dreams of playing volleyball in the near future. She loves practicing in the pool during the summer and says it is one of her most-want activities to do. When it comes to music, Haley is a fan of Shawn Mendes, Ariana Grande, and the Wicked soundtrack. Her favorite movie is In the Heights, a Broadway musical that reflects her love for performance and storytelling. Looking ahead, Haley dreams of attending Penn State. That's an excellent school choice. I just want to let you know that. Inspired by her mom, who is not only a Penn State alum, but also a Hoboken firefighter. Haley looks up to her mom tremendously and is considering following in her footsteps as a firefighter or possibly becoming a doctor. She finds the idea of helping others inspiring and loves watching Chicago Med and Chicago Fire with her mom. Haley said, "I just feel so happy and special because I've never gotten such a big award like this before. Haley, I have a feeling this is just the first of many big awards that we will celebrate for you in the near future." Please join me congratulating our Brandt Student of the Month for June, Haley Crandell. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium the Principal of the Thomas G. Connor School, Ms. Juliana Addy.
At this time, I'd like to call up Aiden Martinez, the Connor Student of the Month for May. Aiden is a kindergarten student in Ms. Crickie's homeroom, who has truly earned this recognition through his kindness, hard work, and positive decision-making. This is Aiden's first year at Connors, and from the moment he entered, his kindness has stood out. Whether he is giving a teacher a compliment about her beautiful hair or thanking the lunch ladies for a delicious lunch, Aiden's kind words make everyone at Connors so incredibly happy. He is the first person to greet someone who enters the classroom and loves to give hugs to those who are willing to accept them. Aiden's behavior has positively improved since the beginning of the school year. He now understands the importance of keeping his hands to himself, waiting his turn, and helping his peers who may be hurt or upset. During the month of May, Aiden earned all smiley faces on his daily behavior chart. He has become a great role model for his peers, and everyone at Connors is so incredibly proud of him. Academically, Aiden is a true mathematician. He often chooses to do math in his free time and prefers to play with math manipulatives. Most impressively, Aiden can solve a variety of math problems in his head. This year, he has practiced multiplication, division, exponents, and problems that include order of operations. Aiden can explain how he solves the problems and often impresses his older peers and teachers with his quick thinking. Outside of school, Aiden likes to play on his PC and eat his favorite food, spaghetti. He likes to enjoy time with his sister and pursue his dreams of becoming a doctor. When asked how he felt about being Student of the Month, Aiden responded with, "Excited and proud of myself." I can speak for everyone at Connors that we feel the same way and cannot wait to continue to see Aiden grow and spread his kindness throughout his years at Connors through middle school, high school, and beyond. Can everyone please join me in giving a round of applause to Aiden Artest?
At this time, I would like to call up Mia Gorenco, Connor's June Student of the Month. Mia is a remarkable fifth-grade student in Ms. Lauren Schulte's class. Ms. Schulte shared that in the classroom, Mia exemplifies what it means to be a dedicated learner. She approaches every assignment with focus and determination and consistently strives to do her best work. Her active participation enriches our classroom discussions, and her respectful treatment of others makes her a true role model for her peers. Academically, Mia continues to meet and exceed all expectations. Whether she's tackling Lincoln Assessments, crafting thoughtful responses about our core novels, or working through challenging math problems, Mia demonstrates exceptional effort and consistently surpasses her goals. Most recently, she achieved a perfect 100% on her Math Lincoln Assessment, a testament to her dedication and hard work. What truly sets Mia apart is her resilience. She never gives up when faced with challenges and eagerly applies feedback to improve her work. Beyond academics, Mia brings warmth and kindness to our Connors community. She treats everyone with respect, follows classroom and school rules without exception, and has a special gift for making others feel welcome and included. While Mia may be quieter than some, she possesses a wonderful sense of humor that brings joy to her friendships. Her creativity shines through her exceptional artistic talents. She's truly gifted at drawing and brings that same creative spirit to everything she does. Mia works incredibly hard, gets along beautifully with everyone, and embodies the qualities we hope to see in all of our students. She's absolutely deserving of this honor. It is with grief pride that I once again congratulate Mia Gorenco, our Connors District Student of the Month for June 2025.
At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Steve Dickerson, the Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Good evening. So I'm gonna go a little out of order just to give a little time for one of our friends. At this time, I would like to call Alyssa Romano. Come on up. Alyssa Roman, come on up. So we are here tonight to celebrate Alyssa Roman, a student who has truly distinguished herself as a remarkable role model in her classroom for this year. Alyssa has shown dedication to her learning, which has even, has been evident each day as she is highly engaged in classwork, consistently goes above and beyond on class assignments, and actively participates in our classroom discussions with enthusiasm and insight. She especially enjoys academic challenges, particularly in math, and always seeks opportunity to grow and improve. What sets Alyssa apart is not only her academic commitment, but also her kindness, humility, and respect towards both peers and teachers. She interacts with others in genuine politeness and empathy, always willing to lend a helping hand to her classmates and even to younger students she may not know. Mr. Stanek shared that Alyssa's positive attitude, strong character, and compassionate nature have made her a joy to teach this year. We are incredibly proud of her and her confident, and proud of her and confident she will continue to thrive and inspire those around her. Ms. Lucignano stated, "Alyssa brings joy and excitement to teaching. She absorbs new information like a sponge and is always eager to learn." Alyssa is a student who enjoys cheerleading and has a strong interest in math. Her favorite sport is cheer, and she prefers to listen to pop music. This year in fifth grade, her favorite novel she read was Caroline. Alyssa has four cats, likes the color blue, and her favorite hobby is cheerleading. Alyssa is interested in pursuing a career in the medical field, but is still undecided on where she wanted to go. Her personal quote is, "If I fail, I won't give up." Thank you. And by the way, just one side note. For every time I stepped into Wallace, whether as acting principal or a director, she always treat, she always opened up, opened arms and excited to greet. So thank you for that every day. Appreciate it. So let's give it up for Alyssa Roman. And right now, we're going to introduce, we'll come back with Ryan Sorfine from Hoboken Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Please welcome to the podium Kaden Willis, Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for May. This month, Kaden was nominated as Student of the Month for demonstrating outstanding academic effort, strong character, and a positive influence on the Hoboken Middle School community. This month in ELA, Kaden thrived in his end-of-year presentation and discussions showcasing strong speaking skills and genuine enthusiasm for learning and growth. According to Mr. Inglis, Kaden consistently completes assignments with care and attention to detail. His positive energy and thoughtful contributions made a lasting impression on both his classmates and teachers. In math, Kaden has consistently demonstrated academic excellence, maintaining a high A average all year. He went above and beyond by challenging himself with an eighth-grade honors CTY math course. Kaden is also an active participant in class discussions and in math lessons. Ms. Falcone shares that Kaden truly shined this year in his role as an HMS Ambassador during our elementary school visits. As we welcomed future Tigers into our building, Kaden demonstrated attentiveness, kindness, and patience, offering thoughtful answers, guiding students through the halls, and making each visitor feel seen and supported. He represented our school with quiet confidence and warmth that made our younger guests feel excited and reassured about what lies ahead in middle school. Kaden has achieved high honor roll every marking period while at Hoboken Middle School and is currently a member of our National Junior Honor Society and a member of our Hoboken Middle School baseball team this spring. Kaden played a huge role in the success of HMS Baseball Team this past season. As our starting left fielder, he consistently gave his all and was always willing to step into any position when needed. He finished the season with an impressive 400 batting average and pitched in key moments during big games against Leonia and Ridgefield. Kaden is the definition of a team player, always ready to contribute in any way to help the team succeed. Outside the classroom, Kaden plays basketball with friends and enjoys doing his homework. When Kaden goes up, he wants to play, he wants to be a baseball player and would love to play for the Boston Red Sox. Just kidding. I added that. He wants to play for the New York Yankees. When Kaden was told, "We're gonna do great." When Kaden was told he was Student of the Month, he had a huge smile on his face and was excited for this recognition. When asked what makes Kaden a great classmate, his peers shared the following. "Kaden is a great classmate because he takes care of his family and friends. He is a great older brother, which has taught him to be a great role model at our school." Congratulations on this honor. I look forward to watching you continue to lead by example as an eighth-grade student at HMS next year. Please join me in a round of applause for our Student of the Month for May, Kaden Inglis. Next up, please welcome to the podium Nina Sarota, Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month. Hoboken, I'm sorry. Nina was nominated by her guidance counselor, Ms. Falcone, who described her as a student who consistently leads with kindness and compassion, no matter the circumstances. The eighth-grade team collectively shares that Nina is always willing to lend a helping hand, whether she's contributing to a group project or offering a kind word to someone in need. Nina is a diligent learner, a respectful peer, and a thoughtful leader whose quiet strength, dependability, and empathy make a lasting impact. She truly exemplifies what it means to be a positive force at Hoboken Middle School. Beyond the classroom, Nina is actively involved in several school organizations that speak to her character and interests. She is a proud member of the National Junior Honor Society, where she upholds the values of scholarship, service, leadership, and citizenship. Nina also participates in Junior Thespians and performed in the Hoboken Middle School production of Alice in Wonderland. Mr. Benson recalls how, when Nina missed the rehearsal one day, she was so responsible and proactive that she arranged for a friend to record her blocking notes. Her dedication, respectfulness, and enthusiasm shine through everything that she does. Nina has been a true asset to the middle school theater department, and we hope she continues her involvement in high school next year. In addition to theater, Nina is also a valued member of both the chorus and band. Nina's friend Raga shares that Nina is a great friend. She is loyal, creative, and so deserving of this recognition. When Nina found out that she was Student of the Month, she was proud of herself and felt it was a strong way to finish the school year and middle school. Nina also feels she has grown a lot over the last three years. Throughout middle school, Nina believes she has become more resilient, outgoing, and more comfortable in group settings. Nina has some advice for future Tigers, which, one, is to take advantage of all opportunities, make friends in clubs, and most of all, enjoy the ride. Thank you for saying that, by the way. Nina is excited to attend Hoboken High School as a freshman in the fall. She is enrolled in the government pathways AP World History, pre-AP Geometry, and Algebra II. Nina is not quite sure what she wants to be when she grows up, but I know whatever she does, she will succeed. We are proud to recognize Nina Sirona as our Student of the Month. Her leadership, integrity, and genuine care for others sets a strong example for her peers and remind us all of the power of leading with heart. Please join me in a round of applause for our Student of the Month, Nina Sirona. At this time, I'd like to call back to the podium Mr. Dickerson, the Principal of Wallace Elementary.
Hello again. So, right now, I would like to call Lavender. Lavender Falco, please come to the podium. So, I am proud to recognize our kindergarten student Lavender Falco as Wall School Student of the Month for May. Lavender was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Cruz, who praised her outstanding academic progress and exceptional behavior in the classroom. Lavender is truly an asset to both her class and our school community. She's kind, thoughtful, and always willing to lend a helping hand to her classmates and teachers. Her positive attitude and eagerness to learn make her a role model for others. Whether it is assisting a friend taking on classroom responsibilities, Lavender does it with a smile and a generous heart. Her favorite subject is ELA, where she shines through her love of reading and writing. She enjoys diving into stories and sharing her thoughts through writing. Her enthusiasm for learning is infectious, and she brings the same energy to school each and every day.
each and every day. Lavender says she loves coming to Wallace and adores her teacher. When asked what she wanted to be when she grows up, she proudly says she wants to be a teacher, just like the ones who inspire her each day. You inspire us, too. Her friends describe her as a nice and special, and we couldn't agree more. Congratulations, Lavender, on this well-deserved honor. We are so proud of you.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call up to the podium Junior Maximo Rua Espada, Hoboken High School Student of the Month for May. It's not enough to say that Maximo was an outstanding student. That would be an understatement. Maximo is one of the most determined and resilient students I've had the pleasure of knowing. At the beginning of this school year, he faced significant challenges and missed a substantial amount of school. Honestly, I wasn't sure he'd be able to catch up, but Maximo proved me completely wrong and did so with remarkable grace and determination. He completed every single assignment he missed, took all of his assessments on time, and not only caught up, but excelled. Few students demonstrate the level of ambition and grit that Maximo brings to everything he does. Over the course of the year, Maximo showed remarkable academic growth, particularly in English Language Arts class. As a non-native English speaker, tackling ELA curriculum was no small feat. Yet, Maximo didn't just keep up, he led. He was attentive, curious, and constantly pushed himself to understand complex material, landing at the top of his class every marking period. If there were an award for most improved, Maximo wins that hands down. His academic record speaks volumes. He is a high honors student with a perfect 4.0 GPA from 2022 through 2024, despite taking a demanding course load that includes AP Biology, AP Chemistry, AP Precalc, and AP Statistics. His passion for science is clear, most notably through his participation in the John Hopkins University Summer Pre-College Program, Medical School Intensive. There, Maximo honored his understanding of anatomy, public health, and emergency response while also developing the empathy and professionalism essential for a future in medicine. But his excellence doesn't stop in the classroom. As vice president of the math club, he leads by example, encouraging collaboration and creativity. He is a proud member of both the National Honor Society and the Hispanic Honor Society, reflecting the dedication to scholarship and cultural representation. He also serves his community through initiatives with student government, environmental projects, and the Agape Club, contributing to faith-based outreach and service. Maximo is bilingual in Spanish and English with emerging skills in Portuguese, a testament to his love of learning and communicating across cultures. At its core, Maximo is driven by a desire to become the best version of himself. His perseverance, curiosity, and humility make him not only a top student, but a remarkable human being. His journey has been inspiring, and there is no doubt that he will leave a lasting impact wherever he goes. Maximo, congratulations. You've not only met every challenge, you surpassed it, and we're very proud to be part of your story. Congratulations. And I'd like to congratulate Senior Jacob Linder, our June Student of the Month. I thought we might have lost you to senior movie night, but I'll get you out early, I promise, Jacob. Tomorrow, Jacob Linder graduates from Hoboken High School, and it's hard to overstate the impact he has made during his time here. Jacob is a standout student in every sense: intellectually curious, deeply engaged, and dedicated to making a difference. He will be graduating with the AP Capstone Diploma, a testament to his academic rigor and passion for learning across a wide variety of subjects. Jacob's achievements reflect both his drive and his values. He is a tireless advocate, a change-maker, and a leader. As president of the Gender and Sexuality Alliance, the GSA, Jacob led with courage and compassion, creating a more inclusive school community and spearheading important events, including a successful Trans Day of Visibility fundraiser. His leadership will be felt for years to come. An avid environmentalist, Jacob has been a committed member of the Hoboken High School Environmental Science Club since freshman year, helping organize everything from local cleanups to educational events. He helped lead the award-winning H2O-Boken Initiative, a project focused on reducing rainwater runoff and educated Hoboken residents on sustainability. This project earned first prize in the New Jersey STEM Communities Challenge and later received a $5,000 grant from Bloomberg Phila... Phila-Lonster? I can't say the word. Youth Climate Challenge, allowing the team to distribute over 200 rooftop gardening kits to the community. Jacob is passionate about science and exploration. He participated in the Student Spaceflight Experiments Program, SSEP, and served as a lab assistant for the Hudson River Explorers Institute, furthering his commitment to hands-on learning and scientific discovery. Teachers and mentors consistently highlight Jacob's curiosity, thoughtfulness, and generosity. Mr. Anderson praised his dedication in alignment with core school values. Ms. Lottlin described him as a beautiful combination of curiosity and calmness, someone who sparked classroom conversations and continued learning long after class ended. Jacob's journey doesn't stop here. He will be attending Brandeis University, where he plans to pursue a path that may lead him to U.S. Federal Foreign Service or another form of public service. Given his commitment to the community, equity, and sustainability, there is no doubt he will make a meaningful impact wherever he goes. Jacob, thank you for your leadership, your heart, and your relentless pursuit of knowledge. Hoboken High School is proud to call you an alum. Congratulations.
I don't think you know how impactful your stories, your accomplishments, and everything we get to hear about you is to all of us who sit up here, and especially wonderful to see you here with your wonderful friends and families here supporting you. That love, that encouragement, is going to help drive you through all the great things you're going to do in your future. And I just want to give one last round of applause. We will now hear from our student representative from Hoboken High School, Ms. Jenna Siriyo.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Siriyo, and I'm the Hoboken High School Student Government Representative, and thank you for having me today for the last Board of Education meeting of this school year. The time between the last meeting and this one has been a period filled with finals, stress, awards, and elections, so I'll just quickly go through those. First and foremost, congratulations to Claire Snyder for winning the student government president, Vivian Allen for vice president, Skylar Colvin for secretary, Avery Martinez for treasurer, Sasha McHale for media manager, and me for Board of Education liaison. So, you'll be hearing from me again next year as well. For National Honor Society, congratulations to Ava Penn for president, Tasha Fu as vice president, Jay Malik as treasurer, and Lala McDonough for secretary. On May 20th, Hoboken High School held their annual National Honor Society induction ceremony, in which service awards were presented to 58 of our students, in which 13 of them were students who have completed over 100 hours of community service. Way to go, Red Wings! It's been a wonderful year, and I'm so grateful to get to look forward to even more meetings. Have a great summer, and as always, go Red Wings!
Thank you so much, Ms. Siriyo. Dr. Johnson, do you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
I do. Okay, this evening, I have a brief superintendent's report to update the board on the demographic study.
Yep. For those of you who have to head out, we'll give you a minute, and then we'll resume the business portion of our meeting. Dr. Johnson, you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
I do. I have a brief report, just to update the board on our draft demographic study. On June 3rd, we received a draft demographic study report constructed by the New England School Development Council. The report highlights 10-year enrollment projections and the demographic features that affect student enrollment in the Hoboken Public School District. The report opens with a review of information pertaining to trends in state and local population and includes data regarding factors that influence school enrollment, such as birth rates and their relationship to kindergarten enrollment, the relationship between preschool enrollment and kindergarten enrollment, local real estate, and development trends. It also includes an updated 10-year enrollment projections report with an enrollment forecast of any expected student yield from any proposed new residential construction, if applicable. The demographers analyzed district and municipal records, New Jersey Department of Education data, U.S. Census trends, birth rate data, housing sales data, HUD trends, and consulted with Hoboken city planners and building departments to determine any new residential construction. At this time, the report generated is still in draft form. We are still in the process of reviewing the report, including all of the proposed projects that are currently being built in Hoboken and those that are in the queue. But based on the information that the demographer has right now, over the next three years, the K-5 enrollment is projected, it looks like right now, the K-5 enrollment is projected to increase by 5%. Grade 6/8 enrollment is projected to increase by 40%, and grades 9/12 enrollment is projected to increase by 15%. These percentages are conservative, as the report still has data that needs to be finalized. However, most notably, the report does suggest that within 10 years, by 2034, 2035, our K-12 enrollment is projected to rise from 2,698 students to 3,650, or an additional 952 students, which is an increase of 35%. Again, these numbers may change slightly when the report is finalized, but we'll know that sometime by the end of the summer, or into the beginning of the school year. Over the summer months, we are going to continue to work with the demographer to ensure that she has everything she needs to finalize and publish the report. When that occurs, we will do a final presentation to the Board of Education at one of our meetings, most likely in September. We're going to then post the report on the district's website and hopefully have some special meetings around the final demographic report in conjunction with the Long Range Facilities Plan and the strategic plan as well. Also, on the agenda this evening, there is a resolution for the appointment of a school business administrator. While Ms. Lopez has been with us in the district as assistant business administrator for a number of years, I am pleased to recommend her this evening as our next school business administrator. I'm confident that Ms. Lopez is going to bring a fresh new perspective to the office and great expertise to the position as well. As the 2024-2025 school year comes to an end, I would like to congratulate the graduating class on years and years of outstanding personal growth and inspirational accomplishments. I'd also like to give a shout-out to our kindergarteners, our fifth and eighth graders as they move up to their next respective grades, and I wish all of our staff and families a happy and healthy summer. I'm extremely excited, which I always am every summer, about the planning that takes place over the summer months as we get ready for the next school year. So, as we're ending one school year, I'm actually very excited about the start of the new school year. But right now, I do hope that everyone takes time to unwind and relax and recharge.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We'll now move into committee reports. Ms. Lopez, do you have a business administrator's report for us this evening?
I actually just have one update I wanted to let the board know. I did let Mr. Clufold know earlier. There was a late update to one of our tuition contracts to include an aid for a student, and we wanted to put that on tonight to present it to you as complete rather than a revision next month, so you will see that as the last tuition contract on that item.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lopez. Ms. Norwood, do you have a curriculum committee report for us this evening?
I do, thank you. The curriculum committee met on Thursday, June 12th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Kana, and myself. There are a number of curriculum items on the agenda. The committee recommends all for approval. 901 is approval of the submission for Hudson County Sports and Education Grant. 902 is acceptance of a climate change, education, and resilience continuum grant in the amount of $15,000. That grant's been funding the Living Lab at Hoboken Middle School, the Environmental Science Club at Hoboken High School, and the Aquaponics Lab. 9.03 is the approval of submission of the New Jersey DOE Empowering Educators Grant. 904 is approval of submission for an advanced placement course expansion grant in the amount of $75,000. And here we are, working on professional development supplies, adding AP Physics, expanding AP BC Calculus, expanding AP African-American History. 905 is acceptance of the New Jersey DCA Local Recreation Improvement Grant in the amount of $85,000, which will go towards replacing the rubber tiles on Brant's roof, which are at life. 906 is approval of an agreement between the Hoboken Board of Education and Cortana Way, otherwise known as Mathneseum. That's for Summer Algebra Readiness Program contract. And 907 is approval of Field Trip. Couple notable items. After feedback from parents, the new summer assignment structure offers more flexibility with the ELA assignments and paper-based math work. There was a conscious decision by staff to move away from computer-based work over the summertime. Chromebooks have been collected from students in order to be cleaned, fixed, and serviced over the summertime. There is a concerted effort towards our summer programs and specific efforts to close achievement gaps over the summertime and into next year. In terms of summer programs, there'll be English and math summer school at Hoboken In terms of summer programs, there'll be English and Math Summer School at Hoboken High School, Ingenuity Credit Recovery, as stated for the contract discussed already. The 9th grade Summer Algebra 1 Readiness Program will be a combination effort between Mathneseum and an executive functioning component put on by the district for 24 incoming 9th grade students who could use some extra support for Algebra 1, and that will occur through the month of August. There'll be a college essay writing workshop help in August as well. As you all know, last summer program to prevent backslide for children will be occurring in July. And there'll be the Extended School Year Program for those who need it with IEPs and other disabilities. Also during the summer, there'll be a variety of curriculum developments and updates conducted by staff, including the curriculum development for AP Physics, middle school electives, the development of uniform key-to-two ELA lesson slides to assist in the consistency of use of Orton-Gillingham strategies across the district, the middle school advisory curriculum development, the curriculum for the High School Avid Program, and the High School Business Curriculum. There'll be a STEAMWORKS enrichment camp held at Hoboken High School in August. For the dual-language program, the district held a year-end review for the parents, and presentations were held for each elementary school. Regarding the Gifted and Talented Program, the Johns Hopkins CTY Program, 62 more students qualified this year than last year, so we have approximately 537 students participating next year. There will be a new structure based on parent feedback for '25-'26. There have been presentations to the parents at HMS and all of the middle schools. The verbal program will stay largely the same and be an enrichment program. However, the math will now be a full-year accelerated program in place of the students' math block with in-person instructors. And that is my committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. We'll now turn it over to Mr. Granja for Facilities.
Thank you, Ms. McGurk. The Facilities Committee met on June 12th last week, and in attendance were Ms. Katamatory, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callie, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Clubfeld, and myself. There are two items on the consent agenda. 13.01, which is the approval of our fire and safety drill reports, and 13.02, which is a resolution that I'll cover in my capital funding update. So a few updates in the space, because some things are actually moving now, which is exciting. We have requested a formal $1.9 million discretionary funding request to outgoing Assemblyman Allen. Funding for this is not, full funding is not necessarily unlikely, but any amount will be awarded to support additional and continued renovation at the high school. As we talk about our facilities and our challenges in terms of space, believe it or not, our high school is experiencing them as well. I think the big update is with regard to 13.02. The School Development Authority has granted approval to proceed with a project to finally repair the facade outside of Demereth School, which everybody's been waiting for. So that $2.3 million ward still needs to move through the SDA process. That usually is a fairly, experientially is a fairly rapid process, and we hope the construction could begin over the summer in July or August. Cross fingers people could come back to the school year with scaffolding removed from Demereth School. Cross fingers. An additional $85,000 grant was awarded so that we can do rooftop work at Brant, including replacing rubber tiles. I was going to update the Long Range Facilities Plan, but that's going to be tied to the demographic study, which Dr. Johnson already spoke to. Changes we're making at the middle school are also to create additional space. We are going to move administrative staff either within the building or we're going to move administrative staff out of the building, Mr. Callie will be, in order to create additional new music room space and other classroom space-based in the middle school. And lastly, it's kind of my least favorite update, but it's a very important update regarding the world we live in, and that is security. We are finishing up security work at all of our schools, and that involves a combination of either adding bulletproof coating to doors, replacing doors altogether with improved security doors, external buzzers, and security vestibles. Each school is different, but these are designed to protect our students from potential harm, and that is just the reality of the world that we live in. I think that is the total of my Facilities Report. Thank you, Ms. McGurk.
Thank you, Mr. Granja. Mr. Clubfeld, do you have a Finance Report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. The Finance Committee met on last Friday, June 13th. With me were Mr. Delatore, Mr. Granja, Ms. Lopez, Ms. McGurk, and Ms. Sullivan. As I said in my notes that were distributed to the board over the weekend, this is kind of a long finance agenda, typical for this time of year as the business office closes out the 2024-25 fiscal year and as we put in place some things in preparation for '25-'26. But the committee did review everything and recommends all for approval. Couple of things to highlight. The bills and claim list is much longer than it usually is, again, closing out the end of the school year. And a couple of additions since my notes were circulated as final bills. Couple came in Friday afternoon and Monday. Business office is trying to process those payments as quickly as can to close out the year. 11.06, agenda item 11.06 is tuition contracts. I want to point that out. It's an extensive list. But these are mostly renewals for some of our special needs students who are currently attending these out-of-district placements. So these are renewals of those contracts as they move into the next year. Transportation, 11.08, were some final end-of-year field trips and sports travel. 11.12 and 11.14 to 11.14 is interesting. As we close out the '24-'25 fiscal year, there may result in some unspent dollars, which we're not just allowed to keep. We have to transfer them to future specific reserve accounts. So this motion gives the administration flexibility once that surplus is determined to transfer that money to either maintenance, capital, or legal reserves as they kind of see fit and see the need. Finally, we have a couple of very thoughtful donations. One from Ruben Hira to the middle school, and one from Deloitte to Connor School. And then I just do want to add, this didn't come up in Finance, but I've been a member of the Finance Committee for many years, both as a committee member and as Finance Chair. And I've worked throughout that time with Ms. Lopez, and I look forward to voting yes on her appointments as Business Administrator. And I look forward to continue the positive and fruitful relationship. So I don't want to twist anyone's arm, but that's... I'm very pleased, Ms. Lopez, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Clubfeld. We'll now turn it over to Ms. Katamatory for Governance.
Thank you. The Governance Committee met on Thursday, June 12th, 2025. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Norwood, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Clubfeld, and myself. Committee discussed the agenda and recommends all agenda items for approval. As is typical this time of year, we have a number of agenda items related to faculty and staff this summer and the upcoming '25-'26 school year. You'll also see various items related to training and workshops, all of which are detailed on the agenda. Today's agenda includes, among other things, the following items of note. 10.01 through 10.14 include the bulk of resignations, appointments, and modifications to appointments for the '25-'26 school year, as well as approval of certain stipended positions for the summer and for the extended part of the current school year. We'd like to give a special mention to the resignation of Ramos Estrella for the purpose of retiring under item 10.02. Mr. Estrella has been with the district for over 20 years, and we thank him for all he has done for our students and would like to wish him a healthy and happy, well-earned retirement. I would also like to highlight the addition of a summer course at the high school for college essay writing, which was already mentioned under curriculum. For me, it's under item 10.14. That will be available to our high school students and taught by Ms. Troutman and Mr. Huggins. 10.15 is the approval of our Comprehensive Equity Plan for the next three years pursuant to NJAC 687, which mandates that all districts develop and update their comprehensive equity plans every three years to identify and correct all discriminatory and inadequate programs, policies, and conditions within their schools and to ensure compliance with all other state and federal equity laws, regulations, and codes. The Comprehensive Equity Plan builds on our previous plans. Note that item 10.28 relates to the approval and ratification of actions taken in connection with the submission of the Comprehensive Equity Plan. 10.19 covers the approval of the payment of various quantitative and qualitative merit goals for various administrators and supervisors, including for our superintendent, Dr. Christine Johnson. 10.20 approves the district's HIV self-assessment for the '23-'24 school year as verified by the state. The district's HIV grade under the assessment is a score of 76 out of 80. You will also see the district's by-school HIV report for May 2025 under item 10.27. 10.26 is the approval of the district's Affirmative Action Team for the '25-'26 school year. And I'm going to pile on with that 10.29. We are very happy to present for approval a one-year contract for our new Business Administrator and Board Secretary, Victoria Lopez, who has been with the district for how many years?
Many.
For many years. After extensive search, both internally and externally, it became clear that we had the most qualified candidate right here. Ms. Lopez will be promoted from Assistant Business Administrator to Business Administrator. Succeeding joy's good, and we are very excited to see her in this new role. Congratulations. 10.30 approves an additional one-year contract for our much-valued Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, beginning on July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatory. Ms. Delara is not with us this evening for the Wellness Report, but the Wellness Committee did meet on June 11th with Dr. Johnson, Ms. Delara, Vice President Angley, Mr. Delatore, and Ms. Kana in attendance, and there are no Wellness items for approval this evening. We'll now move over to my President's Report. This might be a little longer than what you're used to, but I want to give an update on some interesting work that the board has been doing in the past month. On Tuesday, May 20th, the Board of Education and the Superintendent participated in small group meetings to learn more about New Jersey's P3 legislation. As a result of the district's growing enrollment, the city's continued development, and the age of our buildings, the Board of Education has to do its due diligence to explore every possible option to meet our ever-apparent needs, whether it be another referendum, a series of capital improvement projects funded through bank cap and local taxes, an aggressive campaign to try and lobby the SDA or School Development Authority, or something more creative like a public-private partnership. The one thing that we know is that something has to be done. We are all aware that our referendum in 2022 did not pass. We learned a lot from that process. Now, we are also learning about New Jersey's P3 legislation, which includes K-12 school districts. The history of this legislation was rooted in the Economic Stimulus Act of 2009. The New Jersey Economic Stimulus Act of 2009, officially Public Law 2009 C90A-4048, was enacted to combat the effects of the Great Recession by incentivizing private investment, creating jobs, and strengthening state infrastructure and affordable housing. It was limited to higher education. But out of the Act, there were 11 projects done by six universities in New Jersey that included dorms, dining halls, mixed-use educational buildings, and parking structures totaling more than $934 million. In 2018, S865 was signed into law. S865 was a law that empowered public-private partnerships, P3s, for constructing, maintaining, and operating public infrastructure, starting with school facilities and later expanded to include highways, college buildings, and other projects. This law allowed K-12 school districts to enter into agreements with private entities to assume full financial and administrative responsibility for projects, covering design, financing, construction, operation, and maintenance, ultimately engaging a lease-purchase model using the competitive bid process and union labor prevailing wage agreements. The regulations governing New Jersey's public-private partnerships framework were made effective on April 20th, 2020, and with continuity into 2022. In order for a school district to enter into a P3, it must own property or acquire property for the purpose of a 30-year lease purchase venture. There are a number of opportunities to lower annual costs with rental revenue and a much better risk transfer than on a traditional design-build-finance model. To date, there hasn't been a K-12 district that has attempted a P3 project. But there are, however, a number of districts currently exploring the possibility. During the small group educational sessions that the board sat through, members were struck by the thoroughness and comprehensiveness of the legislation. There are multiple opportunities for public input, including public hearings and numerous points of financial accountability by the New Jersey Department of Education and the Department of the Treasury. In fact, it struck most of us as a process that is far more fulsome and detailed than the process that's required to go out to a public referendum. We will continue to study this model and share the process and all of its components at future stakeholder meetings. And this is something that we'll be discussing over the summer and looking into, so you can look forward to hearing more from us on this as we explore how on earth we're going to house all these potential additional students that were highlighted by the demographic study. I saw Mr. Sorafin's face sort of go into some sort of shock or spasm when he heard the projected growth for grades 6 through 9. It is staggering. That's a lot of, that's a lot of middle schoolers. But we hope that through this work, we will find the best possible way to move this school district forward. That concludes the portion of public-private partnerships of my President's Report. I do want to wish our entire school community a very happy Pride Month. You are seen, you are valued, and you are loved in the Hoboken Public School District. And as we come to the end of the school year, it really is always a time that's filled with nostalgia, but also hope for the future. I want to say congratulations to our students, staff, and administration for another excellent school year. A special congratulations to our kindergarteners, 5th graders who had their moving up ceremonies over the last couple of days. A special congratulations to the 8th grade class from Hoboken Middle School, who will graduate tomorrow after, or tomorrow in the morning at JFK Stadium. And of course, tomorrow evening, the Hoboken High School class of 2025 will move from being current Red Wings to alumni. We cannot wait to see all of you walk across the dais tomorrow evening, and we are so very proud of all of you. I want to wish everybody a very happy and, most importantly, safe summer. Please come back to us all in one piece. We are now going to move into public comments on agenda items. As a reminder before we open for public comment, over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board a party to comment as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve the speaker from liability for any comments that could be viewed as defamatory by an employee. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. Board policy requires that all speakers please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and Vice President Angley will quietly motion when you have 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the Chair. Board policy states that the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for a dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or the superintendent.
We have one speaker for agenda items, and it's Manuel Rivera Soler.
Madam President, may I? I feel a little awkward. I feel thousands of eyes behind me. I feel thousands of eyes behind me. Just trying to, you know, feel comfortable up here. Okay, I appreciate, thank you very much. Good evening, Madam President, trustees, members of the public. I appreciate the time. Just a few questions. I know it's not a question-and-answer service, but I just have concerns. I just want to know, and I'm sure perhaps you can find a way to get that information to members of the public. I was just quickly, want to say, even though he's in the agenda, I was going to say in my public comments, but I might as well say now, again, congratulations to Mr. Ramos Estrella in his service, and he will be missed, I'm sure, by all those who he interacted with. So, safe journeys in your future endeavors. Madam President, I would like to just now start with the agenda. On 10.25, I have a question in regards to what trustee Granja, I hope I said your name When you were mentioning the facilities and the upgrades that are going to be possible or are interested in regards to the safety of the buildings, would that affect for the employees that we have in the quote-unquote "our security" personnel? And is this the actual number of security personnels that we have throughout the school year, or is this just as is here for the summer program, these here? Are we going to have more? And will that implement, again, the security? When you say that, that sounds like a big undertaking of construction and stuff. Would that affect any building, again, if you've got to change doors and stuff and vestiges? So, that would be a question that, you know, in concerns to finance and stuff, that is a question that members of the public, at least I have. I would also like to ask, when, was also mentioned, the bills and the things that are here to be paid, the final number, because I heard there was some pending. Will the final number be available for members of the public to see in the website? Or will you be able to, at this point, tell members of the public? Is it $2 more? Is it $100,000 more? And what it is for? Just basic questions. And also, when you speak about, again, I always ask this question, I just do it for refreshment for members of the public and members that are watching. When, again, we accept retirement requests, again, it is always one-on-one. One professional educator gone or retires, one comes in. At this point, I know that I'm answering my own question, I just want members of the public to, if you nod your heads and say yes, that would be what it would be. And again, it was a very interesting presentation this evening. I was able to follow, even though I had to jump back and forth, so I appreciate all the attention to details. And again, the grants that are being requested, again, I hope we do get them and the school district benefits from it. As well as, again, I would like to say a big thank you, because I read over here the volunteers that always volunteer for the music and theater. These people are special people, and I just want to recognize them so they can know that they are recognized in public and on the record, as well as those wonderful people who donate to the school district. And again, I thank you for the report, for the opportunity to speak. Have a good evening. I'll talk to you in two minutes, two seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera Soler. We appreciate your comments regarding Agenda Item 1025. That's the approval for the security guards who will be working through the summer. That's not going to be impacted by security work on the buildings. I think it's important to recognize that the security work that's being done to our buildings, especially given the age of most of our buildings, is something that's really necessary to keep our staff, our students, our administrators safe in what seems to be an increasingly unstable and frightening world out there. Read through the list of these security guards. These are people all of us know, and they are the first line of defense. I am very pleased that we will be putting some stronger film in front of those folks, because, you know, like it or not, the nature of their job is such that they are on the front line of protecting our students and our teachers and our administrators every single day, and we are grateful to them for that. The numbers for the bills lists that are reflected in the agenda tonight are the final numbers. When we were discussing things being pending, that was as we were going through our committee meetings last week. Typically, it does take generally until sometimes the day before the meeting and sometimes even the morning of the meeting for us to have everything in final fashion. And that's why Ms. Lopez mentioned the tuition contract that needed to be amended. That way, we wouldn't have to go back and revise that. And I agree with you on the volunteers. We have so many wonderful volunteers in this school district who devote so much time to, whether it's being banned, parents, or helping with the sports teams, or volunteering for the theater program, helping the eight gazillion children who are in the musical and doing all that hard work, and also the folks who came from Deloitte and I think maybe another organization too last week and did work on the playground at Connor School. They did a beautiful job, so we're very grateful for all of them and thank you for bringing them to my attention, because I was remiss in not including them in my president's We are now going to, are there no more speakers on agenda items? Thank you, Ms. Lopez. We're now going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Ms. Lopez, please call the roll.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Ms. Cattamatory.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Mr. Granja.
Yes.
Ms. Kanna.
Yes.
Mr. Clough.
Yes.
Ms. Norwood.
Yes.
And Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. We are now going to move into public comments on agenda and, oh, and congratulations, Ms. We are all very excited for you. Now, we will move on to comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Okay, we have two speakers. The first is Mr. Soler. Yes. Okay, Ms. Versace.
Good evening, Roseanne Versace, Hoboken Wallace School Science teacher. Congratulations, Ms. Lopez. Very happy for you. Just wanted to make a mention of a few teachers, et cetera, that achieved some milestones this year and are retiring. We had our end-of-the-year party a few weeks ago, which was a very wonderful celebration. And at that event, we honored our Teachers of the Year, ESPs of the Year, and we also had one of our teachers, Denise Chekov, who celebrated 25 years in the district. She spent 23 years as an English teacher at the high school and now the last two years as a teacher in Hoboken Middle School. We also honored Robert Rodriguez, who retired at the end of last school year, as of July 1. He was a member of our transportation unit. He was here for 30 years. And last but not least, Patricia Patty Drumgoole, who spent 32 years, actually tomorrow's her last day, 32 years in the district. She started as a special ed teacher, self-contained class, and moved on to the child study team. So, while we will miss all of them, we are very happy for them and we wish them a very long, happy, and healthy retirement. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Frances Medina. She was on the agenda a few months ago. Frances completed 30 years with the district as a paraprofessional. She worked many years in the special ed department, and Ms. Fran was just a wonderful, loving human being, so we also wish her well. Last but not least, congratulations to all our graduates, young and older, little kindergartners going into first grade, 5th graders, whilst in particular, we had our moving up ceremony today. I recall them very fondly as the COVID kindergarteners, so I remember seeing them quite often in the science lab. And, you know, as someone who taught them this year, I had one science class. It was absolutely remarkable to see their transformation. I mean, this morning, I woke up and I was like, oh, my God, you know, they were just so little and so cute, and now they're big and cute. But we wish them all the best in middle school. I just wanted to mention one little thing about Alyssa Roman, who was the Student of the Month for Wallace. She is a phenomenal violinist. Really, what they've done with strings at Wallace, I'm going off, but is really so remarkable. If you get a chance to watch the video of the performance at the elementary concert, they really, really were very impressive. So, kudos to all the music department and especially her. I mean, HEA office is next door to the music room, and so I hear the transformation from, you know, as I say, cats in heat, to what they developed to. So, yeah, so we got some good people here, but I know you know that. And then the 8th graders, of course, going into the high school, and last but not least, the high school seniors, also thinking about them as little kindergartners way back when. So, we wish them all the best, whatever the future holds for them. And lastly, just thank you all for your support during the course of this school year. We wish everybody a restful, enjoyable, safe summer, and we are all looking forward to the new school year. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Soler.
I'm giving you a little ASMR over here. I apologize once again. But again, I appreciate the speaker before me. She broke up the monotony. I didn't want to be here too much, but now I have my personal comments here, which I would like to make. First of all, I was remiss to mention, as the trustee said, about the 2.3 mil for that grant for this building, this august building. It is important that, I hope, pardon me, that it gets through, and it is important for us to continue to maintain and protect the integrity of this structure. It is historic. It has great history. Again, as I always say, generations of my family, when it was a high school, graduated from this location. And yes, I am that old. Also, I would like to say again, congratulations to Ms. Lopez. She also, this year, I guess, joined the students and moved up. So, congratulations to you and all the best. We know that it's in good hands with you, our business administration. Madam President, I would also like to say, I was remiss the last time. I also didn't say my name. My name is Manuel Rivera Soler, six-word Hoboken. We've got to keep things on the up and up. And again, good evening all. My remarks are here in a little chicken scratch, so I have to read them. So, first of all, let's wish, again, all the students that are graduating from my alma mater, Hoboken High School, and all the elementary schools, all the best to their parents. I met a couple of parents as I was coming up at the elevator. They were so excited for this evening, and that's a joy to see. When it happens to my nephews and nieces, it's always an exciting time. Even if they're not your relatives, you always get a little chuckle when you see them so excited, especially your little neighbors and stuff. It is fantastic. I'm so happy to live in such a community for, well, I would say, all my life. And that's what gives me joy when I come up here, when I see the students and such. And of course, when I ask the questions, and I thank you all for your generosity and your openness to answer some questions sometimes, because, again, we know it's not a question and answer. So, I say with that, thank you to all of them. Thank you to the educators, all of them. Again, show an effort that they do every year. We don't applaud them much. We don't even, we compensate them enough, but we know that those are negotiations with unions, so we'll stay out of that. But we want to wish them all the best. Again, rest and enjoy your summer. To the security staff and the janitorial staff and all the persons who work in this school district, all the very best. Also, again, a little note, as Madam President mentioned, when these conversations come up in the future, as you mentioned, for the P3 situation for upgrades in the schools, it's always important to, with as much anticipation as you can within the constraints, that members of the public and the whole district and the residents of Hoboken have all of that information and have that long runway that was not offered, or at least some people didn't believe they were offered in the last time. So, to avoid controversy, my, of course, simple recommendation is, the more information, and as you always do, the better. And again, when also, again, not a question and answer, this is not, but the number of the students that are going to, in future, be registered for our school district, it is impressive, the 40% increase in the 6 to 8. I'm really interested in seeing those numbers when they come in, because it seems like we get them for the middle and then we drop off when they're becoming adults, when we need them to stay in the at the school. But it perhaps is not. I see you shaking your head. But I'm just saying, future, future. And again, there's no, nothing negative towards you. I'm just saying that it's fascinating to see it, you know what I mean? So, with that, I just want to say again, have a great summer. I'm sure we'll see each other in the high school. And again, to everyone that is retiring, happy retirement. Those who are joining you, welcome aboard, I guess. And with that, I'm going to say, God bless you and God bless Hoboken. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera Soler. I want to point out something about the enrollment trends that Dr. Johnson highlighted from the demographic study. I think it's important, and we've talked about this a couple times in enrollment presentations, to think about school enrollment longitudinally. So, if you think about that bowl list that's going to be headed to 6th to 8th grade a few years down the pike, it really reflects the increase that we've seen in recent years in our K-5 enrollment. So, it's like you have this growth, and then that growth continues up through the cycle. What's unique about Hoboken is that we seem to have, year after year after year, of a lot of growth, most likely due to new development in the communities. You know, simply look around, lots of new buildings going up, and really, anything that's larger than a one-bedroom condo is going to come with kids. So, it's a, when you build more housing, if you go to any suburban community, they're going to talk to you about, hey, if we're throwing up 10 houses or 15 houses or a subdivision, that's going to come with impact to schools. And that's something, it's a conversation that frankly, wasn't had at the city level when you look at the master plan, or you look at the Northwest redevelopment plan, the Southwest redevelopment plan. Some of these plans have like one sentence that addresses students. So, that's why this demographic study, and making sure the demographic study is an accurate representation, is so incredibly important for us as we move forward, and that's why we're having these conversations now. We appreciate your tuning in to all of that, so thank you for that. We're going to be going into executives.
Can I just want to add one thing, because I did want to acknowledge that I was vehemently shaking my head no, when Mrs. Soler actually mentioned that there's a drop-off from 8th grade to high school. Our recent trends show that that is absolutely not the case. In fact, we drop very, very few students between 8th grade and freshman year, and in fact, we tend to gain now from the other schools, such as the charter schools or even the private schools in the city. That may not have been the case years ago, but it is certainly the case now. So, we are fairly... So we are fairly, I would say, equal when you go from our eighth-grade class, and maybe even these, in the last couple of years, a little bit of a bump up when you get to our freshman class. So I just want to make sure that that trend is acknowledged, because we have seen it a few years in a row now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatori, for that. I intended to address it, and it went right out of my head, because it's been kind of a long day, but thank you for that. I appreciate it. We will now be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking action, so we'll just be coming back to close. I stand corrected. We may be taking action. We will be in executive session for approximately, my guess would be, one hour total. Do we have a motion?
So motion.
Second. Ms. Lopez, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Grania?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Clofle?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
And Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Thank you. It's eight thirty-three, and we're headed into executive session. It's nine twenty-four PM, and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Ms. Lopez, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Grania?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Clofle?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
And Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Now going to turn it over to Mr. Gagliardi.
Thank you, Madam President. As was noted with the motion to go into executive session, there were several issues with which you needed to consult with counsel. One of them involved a settlement that is recommended to the Board by its insurance carrier, and I'm going to propose a motion, if I may. The motion would be for the Board to authorize a settlement of claim number one-nine, G as in Gary, L as in Long, zero-zero-five-one-eight-S as in Sam, with said settlement recommended and funded by the Board's insurance carrier.
Do we have a motion?
Could we motion said that counsel has given the directive for the motion is now on the record, and that we are motioning accordingly? Motioning what you said?
Yes.
Perfect. Motion.
Ms. Lopez, can you please take the roll?
Yes. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Grania?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Clofle?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
And Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good evening.